Like to call the meeting to Harner. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigat.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen are here on a cold night. A roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner. Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor. Finance Director Jamie Maitritt. City Engineer Tim Gregowitz. Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Faber. Director of Parks and Recreation W Belvo. Health and Housing Director Bob Stabeau. Director of Public Works Jason Poole. Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle. Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill. Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Randy Smith is here for Royce, he's on vacation. Assistant Chief Sparker's here for Chief Clay, he's on vacation. And Kenny Vaughn's excused, he's had a sick day. And Brian Flynn's here for Garrett Harner. You can tell this is not Garrett Harner. He's a little younger.
That's right.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you would, if you're able, please stand and join with me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Remind everybody the second meeting of the new year, that please use your microphones for the taping purposes. And when we do have public participation in just a moment, if, once I call on you, go to the microphone in the middle and please speak into it so we get everything recorded properly. Before we start public participation, I also want to go over the emergency plan. If we had to leave the building for any smoke or fire situation, we would ask that the, the police are certainly here to guide us, but we'd ask that you go out, preferably the front door. I know it's a cold night, but we still would like to meet over by the courthouse so that we can kind of make sure that the people you're with are showing up and that we got everybody accounted for. If we had some kind of a storm and you're here at the meeting in this room, the officers would escort you across the lobby to the basement stairwell to go downstairs to a safe place until all is clear. So, at this point in time, we have no public hearing, but I will open public participation. Is there anyone this evening who would like to address the city council? Yes, sir. Please keep your comments as you're coming forward to about two to three minutes, and hopefully it's about something that's pertaining to city business. Just give your name. I'm sorry, is it on, Rich?
It's on, isn't it?
Yeah. Say it again.
My name is John Smith.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm calling to your attention to an email that I sent to you on Friday, the 12th, in reference to the comments you made in the newspaper, or the newsletter, about how you thanked the city for the renovations that were accomplished on the city hall and the police station. I wanted to call your attention to the email because it seems like the integrity of the city is being discussed here in the words of the month, and yet, the city is not paying the contractor, particularly the firm I work for, over a hundred thousand dollars for work done and has not been paid since May of 2017. I don't know about you, but I don't think I'd want to continue to work and do my job if I'm not paid for seven months.
Okay, and Mr. Smith, are you the president of the company?
No, I am not the president, I am a project manager for them, and I work in the construction side.
Okay, I will, I will, I will just say this much is what I can say with little. This has all been turned over to our city attorney, Garrett Harner. Now Garrett was supposed to have tried to have had a meeting last week, but I know, just coming off the holidays. But I can assure you, Mr. Harner will be in touch with the president of the firm, trying to resolve these issues. But as you know, there's two sides to every story, but this is a situation that we're, hopefully can avoid litigation, but there are some certain things that are particular. We're not avoiding any payments intentionally, we're trying to just work these details out regarding, this ties into the police station project and into this project, they all overlap. So, they will be getting in touch, and I look forward to sitting down, if I'm called upon, to resolve these as soon as possible.
All right, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, anyone else this evening? Gentlemen in the back of the room.
Stuart Leonard. I was out at the Huff Park House today, and they had six sound trucks from Arkansas, and it was on the, they had all kinds of writing on the side, printing. Audio-sound concepts. Now, they had these, six of these trucks, and they were not doing a darn thing, they were just sitting there. Nobody was working out of those trucks or anything, but what is that gonna, do they need six audio-sound concepts? Is that gonna be a beer hall or a, or a place to have your ears blasted off with all kinds of loud music? And I seen in the flyer, or newsletter outside here, it's supposed to be done by January, the end of January. Well, I was out there, me and my neighbor were out there, and there was five or six guys dabbling around out there, that's all they were doing, dabbling around. Now, if they were serious about getting that done by the end of January, that ain't even two weeks off, they'd have had thirty people working out there. And they still got porta-potties out there, I don't even know if they got the plumbing in the bathrooms. And, uh... And that problem on Wall Bass Street, I thought, when you do extensive remodeling, that you're supposed to get a building permit and let the city or whoever know just what you got in mind for this project, 'cause obviously, I was keeping kind of track of that myself. And I could tell, just by going by there a few times, the people working on that had, didn't have a clue what they were doing. And I think we're too beholden to the Catholic Church. Every time we get involved in a Catholic church, Belvo loses money. They screwed us up, they screwed us on the Maritus Home, the hospital just up and left, the shrine, they're playing some games out there on the shrine, and, uh... Okay, and Kathy Draper was up here the other week complaining about her problem on Eighteenth Street. Well, she was up here about three or four years ago complaining about the same problem, and, and at that time, she complained about my signs in my yard. Well, I think, I don't know if I told her or not, but I thought, you know, would she rather have, would she rather live next to me with my signs? Or live next to these guys that call her a whore and a tramp every time she comes out in their yard? And been causing trouble for, for probably five or six years. She might not like my signs, but I don't call my neighbors, you know, names like that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay, is there anyone else this evening with public participation? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation, and we're gonna go into presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And at this time, it brings me a lot of pleasure to once again call on our good friend Carol Bartle. I won't call on, but I'll recognize Laura Grandy. And Debbie, I think you want to come forward, and I think my friend Jennifer's gonna come down, who's been a part of this. And I'm sure Carol will not have a problem. No, you can come right in there, we'll even take that microphone out of there if you want to and use it, Carol. Carol, you used the microphone before, didn't you?
We, we have, on behalf of the Shriners 5K Parade Run, we want to thank the city for allowing us to have the run before the parade this year. We try to use the road while it's already shut down, and we use the proceeds. Carol's the moneymaker here, she runs out and gets everybody to donate and sponsor it, and Jenny here helps with facilitating all of that stuff that we don't know about, you know, how to, how to get park benches or streets and stuff like that closed. And she knows all the permits and the ways of the world, and she's been very helpful. We've done this our third year now, I'll make this shorter. And we're gonna donate a check again to the city, we divide the proceeds, everything, every nickel is, is profit, because we get everything donated for the race. So, we're very proud this year to give a check for five thousand dollars to Belvo Parks. Their half of the proceeds and the other half of the proceeds, five thousand dollars, went to the Shriners Hospital, because it is their parade, and, and the Shriners are very, they participate a lot in the sponsorship. So, we're just here tonight to give a check, take a photo op so we can put it on our website and sell some more runners.
Thank the Belvo Police Department, they're always really helpful, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Laura, Carol, thank you. We appreciate, this is one more of those many projects you guys dive into. And here's an example, five thousand dollars going to the different park projects, I think, different programs, and five thousand going to Shriners Hospital. I mean, so win-win, and this one works out pretty, pretty, pretty smooth, because the parade's already shutting down for the Shriners Parade, they do it right before then, and you got a captive audience and the runners like that, too, so I think it's kind of neat. So, thank you, and we look forward to working with you often.
We hope for another five thousand dollar check this year, and we're gonna pull, uh, thirty-five thousand five hundred.
Fabulous, thank you. You can come back anytime. For those of you who don't know the trivia, Laura's father was a long-time alderman on this council, back when, I think it's fair to say, Laura, back when we had the benches, and there was actually probably smoke-filled rooms.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, dear. Alrighty, we move on now to the regular portion of the meeting, and we have the approval of the minutes. The city council meeting from January 2nd, 2018, do I hear a motion to accept and file? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Wiggington, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the executive session minutes from January 2nd, and I'd ask for approval, but Jenny, there to be reminded that they're still...
Yeah, they're not being released.
They're not being released, so these are in your care confidentially, but we're gonna go ahead and approve them so we don't get in that old habit years ago where we went so long and had to go back and scratch our heads what we approved. Motion by Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Hazel to approve the minutes from January 2nd, executive session, but hold on to those tight. Don't give them to Mike Cozetteck. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the motion to receive and file those and hold them signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Claims payroll and dispersments. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, eight twenty-two and seventy-seven cents. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion or questions about the claims or payroll? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we go to reports from committees. The General and Community Assistance Group is, I'm asking for a motion to approve a ten thousand dollar grant from the City of Belvo General and Community Assistance Program to be given to the Catholic Urban Programs for vouchers that will continue to be used as they have been during the extremely cold weather, and we've this year used quite a few of them. So, uh, this was, and this was also, Sherry, this was in our budget. So, I asked for a motion for that. Motion by Alderman Hazel, second by Alderman Ovian, any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Master Sewer, Alderman Dillman.
On behalf of Master Sewer Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the low bidder hair plumbing and heating construction in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Sheridan and Cranbrook Sanitary Sewer replacement.
Motion coming from Alderman Dillman, second by Mary Steele, any discussion on the sewer proposal for Master Sewer? This was, Randy, this is pretty much emergency work that had to be done, right?
Correct.
It, yeah, so we're trying to address a problem that's getting worse and worse quickly. We have a motion, we have a second, if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'm asking for a motion to promote Jeffrey D. Hydard, Building Commissioner slash Assistant Director of Health and Housing and, and Building. It increases certain salary to the level of an Assistant Director's position. I'll take the motion first and I'll explain. I have a motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Elmore. Uh, just let me explain here, if I may. We had never replaced Roger Barfield, he wasn't alderman yet then, but when he retired, after eight years or nine years with the city, in that position, prior to that, he was with the police department for thirty. We didn't, because you might remember, we talked about the money situation from the state, this past year's been tight, we've been watching everything, so Bob's really kind of dug in and had to do it. So several months ago, I, I think I notified you that, and I think, I'm not, I don't recall if I just notified you, but Bob and I agreed that Jeff was the right guy to tap on, to be in charge if he wasn't there, and Jeff said he'd take, you know, he would work towards this and see about, you know, learning a little bit more, and we have a discussion. Well, Jeff's been taking on more, and then as you know, on New Year's Eve, Stan Erlinger, Jeff's assistant, passed away suddenly. So Jeff even got thrust into more and more duties, and it became very clear and evident to Bob and I that we needed, we needed to be fair to Jeff. He's been doing a lot more work, and, and he's been doing these responsibilities, helping Bob, he's been filling in, we're trying to get, well, in fact, I guess we got somebody maybe started part-time today. Uh, but we're, we're trying, but there's, there's a lot of things in the works, so this comes as what I feel is only fair. He's doing the work, he needs to be compensated fairly, he's been very patient with us, take, you know, not rushing into this. So at this time, I'm asking for a motion to, we got a motion and a second on the floor already, I'm sorry. Is there any further questions after I gave that explanation for anyone? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. Jeff, stand up, I think most of them know who you are, but thank you. Thank you for what you've done, helping Bob, and I know you guys get along well, and there's a lot to learn, but we, we need, uh, we need some additional support for Bob and that department, and you're the right guy, so thank you very much. Okay, we move on, and the next one comes from Streets and Grades, Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve design proposal in Keel Engineering for Union Avenue Improvements in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars, CDBG, and tip three, so moved.
Got a motion from Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Gah. Do I hear any discussion on this motion coming from Streets and Grades? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance and Legal Review, Alderman Wiggington.
Uh, on behalf of Ordinance and Legal Review Committee, I would like to make a motion to approve amending Chapter 31, Officials and Employees, Section 31.009, Appointment of Employees, and 31.031, City Officers, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear, second by Alderman Pusa, discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
No.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of Ordinance and Legal Review Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve amending Chapter 121, Special Sales, Personal Sales, Section 113.008, Tobacco Retail Stores, so moved.
We have motion, Bob and Wiggington, do I hear a second, coming out of, okay, of the ordinance, Alderman Pusa, discussion on this ordinance proposal? Roll call. I'm sorry?
A little clarification.
The clarification on this one is, we're, we're getting some, more and more requests for smoke shops, and with, one of the things we're trying to clarify is that if there is a smoke shop, it cannot be in an abutting building, so that there could be smoke bleeding over, it has to be in a freestanding. That was one of the things.
Special use.
Special, it's a special use permit, they have to go through that process. So, I think that was the bulk of the, made a couple items right there, you know, okay?
Really to protect adjoining and abutting locations.
Yeah, right, and it was in that, should have been in that, should have been some details in that package, we talked about it in length at Ordinance and Review, but it's been kind of banding back and forth even for a while, we didn't rush into it, but it was time to, it was time to get that done. So we have a motion, we have a second to, I think the best word is, Phil, strengthen this alder, this ordinance. Uh, if there's no further questions, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. At this time, I'm gonna ask our clerk if she will read, are there any objections if we read these communications together? Hearing none, Ms. Jennifer, I'm gonna ask you if you don't mind.
Yep.
Reading them, and then we'll ask for a motion after we get them all read.
12A, St. Patrick's Day Parade, Saturday, March 17th, 2018. Request from the Ancient Order of Hybernians to hold the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 17th, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. City Services requested, trash toters at parade lineup, barricades is necessary for street closures, no parking signs along parade route, and Belvo Police Department personnel for traffic control. 12B, September 11th, Moment of Remembrance, Tuesday, September 11th, 2018. Request from the September 11 Memorial Walkway of Southern Illinois Committee to hold a 9/11 Moment of Remembrance Ceremony Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, from 11:30 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. at Firehouse Number 4, 1125 South Illinois Street. 12C, September 11 Memorial 5K, Sunday, September 9th, 2018. Request from the September 11 Memorial Walkway of Southern Illinois Committee to host their annual 5K run on Sunday, September 9th, 2018, with a start time of 9:11 a.m. and ending time of 11:30 a.m. The start and finish area is at Huff Park. North Third Street between West C Street and West F Street are on a rolling closure during the event. City Services requested, barricades is necessary for street closures, cones, chalk, no parking signs, trash toters, and Belvo Police Department personnel for traffic control. 12D, Halloween Trick or Treat, Friday, October 26th, 2018. Request to approve the closing of East Main Street on Friday, October 26th, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., from the east side of High Street to the west side of Charles Street, and the first blocks of North and South Jackson Streets to the alley only, and North and South Church Streets to alley only, for the city's annual downtown Halloween Trick or Treat, event to be held from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. City Services requested, barricades for street closures, no parking signs, trash toters, picnic tables, and police department personnel. 12E, Veterans Day Ceremony, Sunday, November 11th, 2018. Request to approve the closing of State Route 159 from A Street to Washington Street, and the first blocks of East Main Street and West Main Street, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Sunday, November 11th, 2018, for the city's annual Veterans Day Ceremony to be held at 11:00 a.m. at the Belvo Public Square. Request includes approval to allow ceremony to take place inside the lobby of City Hall in case of inclement weather. City Services requested, barricades is necessary for street closures, picnic tables, and trash toters. 12F, Gingerbread Cookie Day, Saturday, December 8th, 2018. Request to approve the opening of the City Hall Lobby on Saturday, December 8th, 2018, from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the annual Gingerbread Cookie Day. The event is hosted by the Belvo Gingerbread Committee and sponsored by Belvo Main Street. City Hall will be one of the cookie pickup locations. 12G, Ringing of the Bells, Tuesday, January 1st, 2019. Request to hold the sixth annual Ringing of the Bell Ceremony on the northeast quadrant of the Public Square near Kirk's Clock at noon on Tuesday, January 1st, 2019. This ceremony requires no street closures.
I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve 12A through 12G far as communications. Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Wiggington, any discussion on any of those items just read by the clerk? All in favor of approving, yes, sir? Now, they've all been taken to the Main Street, they've all been properly, we're getting better.
I mean, they're all annual events.
These are annual, they're no, yeah, these are all annual events, they've all been aired to the Main Street and to the Chamber, I believe, as well. And we've had no, during this time of, we've had no negative feedback whatsoever, and, and nothing since last year in any of them, about these here, yeah. We have a motion, we have a second to approve these as just read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no petitions this evening, resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3319 and Resolution 3320. Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pusa.
And as a group?
And, and read them as a group, is that okay? All in favor of reading those two resolutions by title only and as a group signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3319, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 17th, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. And Resolution 3320, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the Veterans Day, oh, that should say Ceremony, on Saturday, November 11th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m.
Do I hear a motion to approve those two resolutions, Alderman Pusa, this time Alderman Consilla as the second?